Well, I see by the old clock on the wall, it is seven o'clock. Call this meeting to order in the Fairiesburg Planning Commission, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll call please.
Chair President Jones.
President.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Holly.
Here.
Commissioner Scholberg. Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Tuggle. Commissioner Carlson.
Here.
We have a quorum, we can do some business.
Mr. Chair, could I ask to have Regina Scholberg excuse for the occasion?
Take us.
Hi.
We still have a quorum. Um, consideration for approval of the agenda for tonight, September eighteenth, uh, before any additions or corrections. Uh, entertain a motion, please.
A motion to approve it, we just need to change it to Wednesday at the top.
Yep.
So would that change?
I did that, I did that.
Oh. Oh, the one I just picked up at the podium still says Thursday.
Yes, Wednesday.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries, thank you. A consideration for approval of the September fifth, two thousand twenty-four, meeting minutes as revised. Any other additions, corrections? Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the September fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes as revised, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries, thank you. A public comments. We have one public. The comment.
Gary Post, eighteen, eight twenty-seven, North Shore Drive, uh, future, uh, member of this commission. I'm really excited to read the, um, uh, special document sent out and shared with all commission members, addressing, uh, toolkits for reform of, um, planning and zoning, uh, to address, um, possible obstacles for housing, um, in our, in our community and every community in, in the state. I am, I'm, uh, waiting through this document and I'm, I, I trust everyone on the commission is also looking at this. Um, and, um, I had a communication with Regina Scholberg, the, uh, Vice Chair, I believe, and we were talking about having this on the, uh, agenda for next month's meeting. So I hope, um, at that time, everyone will have had a chance to look at it and, and, and I'll look forward to hearing your discussion. Thank you.
I think what David passed out tonight addresses some of that. Is that taken from that document? That hundred-page document? These two?
Yeah, so, so you were referring to the, the zoning reform toolkit from the American Planning or the Michigan Planning Association? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect, okay. Uh, yes, so, um, that the, I sent the link for the, the previous planning commission meeting as a resource. Uh, I, I think that's a wonderful resource for, for you all. If you haven't read it, I, I think, think we should keep on reviewing that and pull as much as we can out of that as a, a resource for our, our housing component of the master plan. So I think there's a lot of good in there. We, we might not take all of those tools, but there might be some that are more suitable for, for what, uh, you see as appropriate for the community. So, uh, and again, I, I know we'll get into this later in the evening in a few minutes, but, um, I want to talk about some of those tools and we can certainly continue this conversation to the, the next meeting as well. I think housing will probably take two full meetings.
Yes, uh, before, before I forget, uh, and Gary and I had a conversation in the hall coming in. I was in the Chamber of Public Policy Committee meeting this morning, seven thirty, and, um, we talked about the, the chamber has paired up with a Lakeshore Advantage. But I'll, I'll talk about that later, the housing next, and that's one of the main things on their agenda as well. So it's, it's a topic of the, of, uh, de jour, and I do want to get into it more later. Just want to throw that in before I forget. But thanks, thanks Gary. He's the only public here, close the public comments. Seven oh five. Uh, next on the agenda is a work session for our master plan, we're continuing on that. Our quest to have it, uh, ready for council by the end of the year. I trust that we're on target for that. You, you're married now, I know that takes up more, you don't have much free time as you used to have.
Still the target.
Still the target.
To have our draft, uh, by the end of the year. So with, uh, we'll, we'll have four discussion meetings, I, I believe we'll have, uh, uh, today's as well as two in October, I believe. One in November, and then by December we'll have the, the first full draft.
Okay. Did you have something for us specific tonight?
Uh, my thought, I, I handed out just a worksheet tonight and a, and a couple, uh, the comments from, from our previous meeting, uh, just referencing a few of the, the housing tools. Uh, I had, I have a couple of questions in, in, or this evening and maybe topics that we can discuss to, to, to start the creative juices. And, um, I, I think we can continue this again to the next meeting as well.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, I think for, for our conversation tonight is, um, I'd like to start off with a couple of different questions and maybe just go one by one or if, if they all bleed into each other, that's just fine as well. Uh, but I'd like to, to hear i- if you, if there were any lessons learned from the publication, uh, that was distributed, or if you have any questions or comments on some of the, the tools that were in that document or, um, in the memo that you received previous meeting. Um, the one that's under desk tonight includes a, a few of those tools, uh, one through seven, uh, that I had previously mentioned that, that could be appropriate for, for Fairiesburg. Also like to talk about some opportunities, where do you see some of these tools or higher densities or accessory dwelling units or townhouses? Uh, what areas, uh, should we ta- target for, uh, for either greenfield development or, or infill development? Uh, what areas that we could, uh, increase density or housing supply, uh, where appropriate? Uh, some districts, I think, we're certainly going to maintain the existing density, the existing character, but there is going to be other areas that, uh, change who might be appropriate. And then with this, uh, this sheet here, I'd like to maybe just walk through all of our different housing types as well, and just give everybody an overview, um, from the zoning perspective and the future land use perspective. You know, how are we defining each one of our future land use categories and its associated zoning district? Want to talk about the intent of each one of those districts and categories. And then just walk through each one of the housing types, uh, that are in the far left column, you're one by one, and, and look to see where they are currently allowed and where we might look to allow them. And again, we may not want them in the, in, in an entire district, say, let's just say, if, if we're looking at RG two, let's say we want to add a new housing type. It doesn't mean all of RG two needs to allow that, but maybe there's a, a sub-area of some sort in that district that is appropriate. So, um, I, I think we, we need to consider the categories on the future land use map and our zoning districts, but I don't think we need to, to limit ourselves to those. Uh, we, we can, through this process, uh, make changes to the future land use map, and then after the plan's adopted, we, we might end, end up creating a new zoning district or adjusting lines, um, in, in, to implement this planning effort. And then lastly, uh, wanted to ask about just, you know, general zoning recommendations. We might talk about, um, processes and, uh, you know, specific requirements like the, the, the minimum size of a dwelling unit. Um, if we should look at some of things like that in terms of, of specific zoning requirements for dwellings. So that was a lot, so maybe the, the first thing, maybe we just have an open discussion of, of, uh, through your, your reading in the last month or two and, and our discussions of the toolbox, what opportunities you think we, we might have here in Fairiesburg, um, and are there appropriate locations? And, uh, what have you learned and what are you interested in, in, in pursuing further? Um, then after that, we, I think maybe we, we can walk through our, our chart.
Look at the future land, land use map, it's, um, it's, it's been that way for quite a number of years, as I recall. I remember changing it very much. And of course, that's just a roadmap, it's not a, not your zoning map. I look at zoning as, uh, we have a ZBA that, that acts on things that are, it deviates from some of the, if this being zoning, in some cases were appropriate. I often, I'll look at the, uh, the Breckmeyer property we just went through, and we said, was that appropriate for that particular piece of property? There was some unique characteristics there. Um, we don't have that much vacant land around, and therefore would it be in areas where we have tear downs? Where somebody, uh, take, took several houses out, bigger lot, and then wanted to put up, uh, maybe the same density that I've always said restricted on height. Some cases. So it's been my opinion for a while, but you could have the same density, but have another story or two higher, smaller footprint, smaller, smaller roofing area, and more green space. It's only in certain places you, you could do that, but that's a possibility I've often thought of. And look what the township did in the blueberry fields. They effectively created a different zoning district for that particular piece of property. And, uh, so smaller lots, um, that would fit on there without still single family, but they could, they would be able to get more per acre by a little bit. And it wasn't the same as what we would call their RG one, it was a hybrid. And that's how they got around this vote that was taken to repeal it. They'd already done it the way they had to it, kind of clever way to get around it. But it, uh, that, that allowed for not only those, but across the street, as spring grow, also has smaller lots for RG one, for eight thousand square feet. So, you know, smaller lots are, a lot of people like smaller lots, best to take care of. So I think we should keep, keep an open mind on that.
I think with, with the lot sizes, uh, what I'd like to do too is, is look at what we have on the ground in, in, in our districts to see. You know, in our, our table here, um, you'll see that the future land use designations don't address lot size. They, they talk about general density ranges, whereas the, in, in each zoning district will have a minimum lot width and a minimum lot size. And it, we really range from seven thousand to twelve thousand square feet, uh, minimum lot size from, you know, of our residential zoning districts. So, um, what I'd like to do i- is, um, offline outside of the meeting is do a, a, give you a brief analysis and then what areas, you know, are, are we seeing a lot of non-conforming lots in certain districts? Uh, let's just say in certain part of the city, are the lots in that district, are, are they conforming? Are they seven thousand square feet, where, where they're required to be seven thousand square feet? Um, if we see that most in a, in a certain area or a block or a neighborhood are, are smaller, that's where it'd be a good opportunity to, to adjust square footage down to, to reflect more of the, the built environment. Um, or if we see an opportunity where, uh, infill's appropriate and, uh, further splitting lots, we could, uh, say, you know, things should transform a bit from where, where they are to be denser in, in certain areas where there's opportunity. So I think lot sizes, uh, is going to be important for me to take a look at, uh, in terms of what we have on the ground already.
Lot width. Width is the other thing too, that, uh, it could, if it's a constraint. If you've got a hundred and ninety-five, uh, line your feet and you want to split that lot, you'd have to have one that's, that's less than a hundred to be able to do it, and that doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, and I think that's a great point, and, and a lot of you, uh, picked up on that last, well, two weeks ago, uh, when I was in here for, for the, the review of the, the Stillwater Development. Um, the RG three requires seventy feet for the first unit plus thirty-five for each additional. And, and I noted in the report, there, there's one lot that was, um, not conforming to that requirement. So for those four-unit buildings, you needed a hundred and seventy-five feet of, of lot width, which is a, a lot of room. I mean, this is, this is a city, this is a form of an urban environment, it's not a township. And some of those, uh, those dimensional requirements might be strict and, and certainly would not allow for more affordable, attainable housing, so.
And the, and the fit on this property, it would, it would require, did it come before the EBA?
Next week.
Next week, okay. Because they were going to ask for variants on that very question. And we said it was rather than have us do it through the mechanisms we have to go through EBA and then go through the proper checklist and everything. And then if it had to come back to us, then I think it's, it's one of the things you look at. And for that, this particular piece of property, it fits. That was my opinion. There's nothing, it's, it's, it's by itself out there behind a ball field. Nobody's going to go out with a tape measure at midnight and say, you're five feet short, or ten feet or whatever. So I, I think those kinds of things, in my opinion, are easy solutions.
Are you just, are you facilitating us to, uh, brainstorm? Is that what you're?
Yeah, yeah, I think right now, um, if there's any, I think, if there's anything on your mind, just in terms of opportunities and what you've learned from the publication, just throw them out there, and then I think maybe a more structured conversation could be just us walking down the list, and that, that might help, um, spur conversations as well. So if, if you don't feel bad if you don't have any comments right now, I, I think as we walk through each one of these housing types, there'll probably be a lot more conversation, so.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I'm all choked up here. I choked earlier today on a blueberry stone. Life-changing. Um, anyway, uh, I've had a few thoughts about, um, workforce housing. And, uh, I've shared with many of you that I believe that, uh, part of the American dream is homeownership, and we're building far too many apartments that don't give people any chance to build equity. Uh, so I'm all in favor of, um, uh, smaller lot sizes, um, granted in particular districts. Um, I'm all in favor of if it's going to help, uh, not having a garage mandated as it is now for residences. Um, I don't, basements, um, lot sizes. Uh, I've looked at, um, that area on Third Street on this side of the expressway, where we've got a lot of traffic going in and out with semis out of Ver Planks and out of the terminals, and, um, half the lots in there are empty. And I've thought that that would be a great spot for some, that whole strip through there, for some economic development to happen with some smaller lot sizes, and still give people the opportunity to purchase a home. So I think that's one area that would be neat residential area, it's a couple of blocks deep between Ver Planks and Third Street. Um, and there's other opportunities out there as well, I think.
Okay, the, the duplexes that fill up a lot of those spots.
Yeah.
They, they were probably there before the zoning went back, and, and it makes sense. When you come out, um, the, from the park, from the parks, uh, onto, um, hundred and six, seventy-second, and you, with the fire barn across there, across the way, that there are duplexes in there, you hardly notice, except for the cars that are draped out over the driveway, but, uh, but anyway, it's a perfect spot for, uh, traffic there, and those people love it. So those kinds of areas where you look at and say, that kind of makes sense. So, yep.
What is the current status with the corner of Ben Wagner and Olgrin Haven Road? I know, is that, that property?
It's a person on the Grand Rapids.
That, I mean, I know that that's maybe been for sale in the past and really get invited, and that's such a, I don't know if, if housing is, yeah.
It is right next to the, the storage units.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And, and, you know, that he was looking at, trying to buy that property.
And that was it, that wasn't sure if he owned that or?
I think you, I think we'd like to do it, um, that.
They just only have so much land.
Has been, and of course the people that, uh, that live just south of there, they would love to see housing in there compared to storage units. But, uh, but they, there's a lot of property there that they're sitting on that could be developed for a while. It's, it's like the farm, Centennial Farm, same thing. Sounds residential, but, as you, it depends, but, as we all know, when you privately own property, the owner has a lot of choices as to what they want to do with it. And, um, the ownership carries a lot with that. We found that with Ottawa Sands.
Does the city of Fairiesburg currently own any property that could be developed? You know, like, was here, I just watched that whole city council.
We own a couple of street ends, I know that tiny house.
Lot, lot of, lot of street ends. Right next to.
Yeah.
Well, and certainly the, um, that property on the corner across the street from Ver Planks, or not Ver Planks, but, um, Johnson Boiler, um, the Pizza Hut corner. Um, there's a city street there that runs parallel to the expressway, correct Greg?
Maple.
Maple, that's Maple Street, which has some potholes on it, by the way. I emailed you on that.
Next to, you got the dance studio, what's that?
Dance Studio and Pizza Hut, yeah.
I had a street that goes halfway by the dance studio, and you can tell wherever it is where the paper is, there were those potholes, I was going to shoot that.
Oh, is that, the street doesn't go all the way to the gas station? Okay, I did not know that. Well, it'd be great if we could just, uh, administratively change the zoning to make something populate that whole corner because we need to have something there. Or in this.
Let's throw out, look at, like in the toolkit, like, like re- rezoning mixed use and then collapsing zone district. Does that pertain to like some of the things that we're talking about, like right now?
Yep.
I'm sure maybe we want to just start the conversation around that to kind of like move forward on some of the things.
Yeah, I think, I think the mixed-use zoning is important because that's, that's a good, um, almost softball way to, to be able to get increased densities in areas that are, are less concerning to, to existing residents. So, and we have within kind of the core area of, of the township, and I think of the city, and it, exactly where you mentioned too, um, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm my way in, I, I looked over that corner, I said, that could be an opportunity for some sort of mixed use, uh, you know, whether it's retail on the, on the floor and, and apartments on top or condos on top. I mean, I think there's opportunity for infill mixed-use development in, in the core of the city, where it, it's more palatable to the residents because we're not really increasing densities where there's an established, single-family neighborhood. So I think those are the opportunities that we can look for and, and not come, come across the, the not-my-backyard-type arguments against it. So I think there's some, some great opportunities for mixed use. Um, if, if you got, in the chart here, which we'll look at, you know, as I was looking through, I, I've seen these blank cells for, you know, attached housing or for multifamily, you know, in, you know, our, our general commercial or core commercial service districts. Uh, there are some locations where we do allow upper-floor residential and service and core commercial, but we could also e- expand that to general commercial, for instance. Um, but I, I think there's some, I, um, definitely opportunities, uh, as, as Connor mentioned, for, um, you know, underutilized properties in, in commercial areas for mixed use.
David, could you explain the difference between upper-floor residential and accessory dwelling units? And a mother-in-law suite?
Sure, sure. So, um, the zoning ordinance allows for upper-floor residential in, I don't believe there's much, much that really describes what that is, it's just simply, I, I think it just means that you could have apartments or condo units above any sort of, of non-residential use. So I mean, it, it's what it's, it is, in fact, mixed-use type development. Um, we haven't had any requests for that. Um, I think we had one that we, it was a walkout, several years ago, we had the, the business on, on the ground floor and we had a walkout basement in the back, and we, we kind of made the determination that that's, that was the intent of what that meant for a mixed-use residential, commercial building. But I think, um, upper-floor residential is going to be, how, there's no limit on the number of units on the second or third floor, it's just, uh, they, they would be allowed as long as they met the, the minimum area requirements for a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, whatever it may be. So, um, and those requirements are, are in, on page nine twenty-five of the zoning ordinance. It, it has the minimums, um, areas for, for the, for a single-family residential and apartments, two fam- so, so as long as an upper-floor unit met the, the square footage requirements, it can be developed that way. So I, I think that's, upper-floor residential is, is a good way to, to be able to promote additional housing density in, in the areas that we just mentioned. Whereas accessory dwelling unit, we've used that term in the city for, um, the, almost like it, it's been for the, the storage unit facilities or, or for the, the personal and commercial storage suites that we discussed in the past. So, uh, the, the channel-side product where they, they wanted to do the storage for the, the RB and then maybe an office or, or, uh, somewhere where somebody could crash overnight, a, a small accessory dwelling. So we've only allowed those, um, right now in, in our LI one and general, then, then after that, we amended the ordinance to allow that in, in general commercial. So, uh, but I, I typically, an accessory dwelling unit is, is in a residential context, so that it's, it's, it's attached to a residential structure. Um, it could be a, an attic, could, could, uh, converted, could be a basement conversion, uh, could be an, an addition to a, a residential dwelling. Uh, or you could have a, a detached scenario, so, so that you have a detached garage that somebody, um, completely converts into a small dwelling unit, or it's like a, a carriage house to where they have their garage and then, uh, get it over it. So, in, in the traditional sense of that term accessory dwelling unit, it's typically the, the residential district type scenario, and they call them in-law suites or, or whatever, uh, the, the other terms for them. Uh, we use it here just for, um, almost mixed use in, in, in our commercial and, uh, industrial districts, based on the, the, the channel-side proposals, uh, in, in the past few.
And not, not allowed in, in regular housing, just RG one or two or three, not allowed.
Correct, yeah, we, we do not allow for, for accessory dwelling units, um, anywhere else in the, in the city. And, um, so that, that is one of the, the easiest ways to, to increase housing supply. Then again, um, I know one of the priorities is going to be ownership, um, and so I think we need to look at also townhouses and duplexes and things that are, are attached side by side that can be individually owned. I mean, that, that doesn't rule out that they, they could be rented, but, um, I think when we look at attached housing, uh, that, that can be in a form of ownership where, where people can own each unit in a building, whereas something like an ADU is going to be a, a stepping stone to be able to get to, to homeownership. So, and the ADU is usually typically rented until someone can, uh, build up and, and be able to, to afford to, to buy something in the city.
My, my thinking on that is that, uh, i- i- if you, if we talk about the mother-in-law house, is not being a separate, uh, structure, but attached to the main body of the house. So you have in effect a duplex. But because I am not in favor of a tiny house on the back, they have two residential structures on the same lot, I don't think that would work out very well. If it were attached, it'd be something else, a separate unit that's, somebody could live in, uh, self-sufficient, but, uh, it looks like it's part of the main building. And allow them.
That, that's a way to start. If, if you want to begin to, to look toward accessory dwelling units, you could do the attached version. Um, detached, i- i- it's the next level of, of, of intensity. Um, you know, a lot of times too, we'll put in, in zoning regulations to. Um, you know, a lot of times too, we'll put in, in zoning regulations to where the, the main unit, the principal must be owner occupied in order, to, in order to rent the, the accessory dwelling. And, and that a lot of times, um, satisfies the concerns of, of neighbors in planning commissions and councils. They know that the, the owner is occupying it and they're leasing, you know, the, the activities and they're making sure that they're respectful of neighbors because it is an increase in density in a neighborhood and new neighbors potentially in your backyard or your neighbor's backyard, so.
And how, how would you control so that you don't just, we just don't create a whole bunch of Airbnbs?
If I may, I, like, we had, uh, two ladies in here last week talking about, um, it's on the east, where I opened Harbor Point, it's on the east side of Smith Bridge. Talking about, um, this concern of short-term rental. I know in that neighborhood, they're specifically talking about there's three short-term rentals where they have like the in-law suite, so a separate house like on the back of the house. And the people will like, they don't live here, but they'll be there when they vacation at the property and then they'll run out the front of it. And so that's when originally when this, when I like read about the, these units, that was kind of one of the first concerns that I thought about, and then when you finished up, they were talking about, hey, you can write it in where it's like, no, these can be accommodated ding housing with a clause of.
Must be owner occupied. Yeah, and, and the short-term rental, I, I mean, it's, it's always a concern. You know, we have a, a seven-day minimum, which is, we, it, that can be difficult to enforce at times. Um, and, and it comes up a lot. I mean, people want to rent for a night or two and it's, uh, it's a lot of money in the industry and then, and the turnover, I think, when we discussed this a few years ago, our major concern was turnover. So we, we had put seven days, um, in order to maintain level of community and under, knowing your neighbors and, and so there's not a new neighbor every night. So our short-term rental ordinance also plays into this a bit. Um, I mean, I, I, we're, we're looking to increase housing supply. We're, we're not necessarily looking, the goal of this effort isn't, is to, isn't to, uh, just increase the amount of, of, uh, accommodation type units. So I think there's other, other tools in place that we can, can use, uh, to address short-term rental issues. But, but yes, I mean, i- i- it, it could certainly be abused. I mean, that, that, we don't, sometimes it's, it's a complaint-driven enforcement process. We, things happen until, until we hear about it and then, then sue the managerista to work on enforcement from there.
Um, I've gotten some feedback and I think there is a demand for the carriage house type, um, accessory, um, dwellings. That, you know, there's maybe single people that would like to be a part of the community. They could be long-term renters. Um, but the price point for a lot of people is just really tough, um, renting an entire, um, home. Um, but I, I, I think that there could be a great, um, opportunity with the accessory dwellings, whether they be attached or above a garage or a little carriage house. And of course, that would depend on an appropriate um, property, of course, to do that on. But I think that, you know, mother-in-law suite, I think that's awesome. And I think, um, there would be people that would, are, are really, I mean, I have gotten feedback on that. People are looking for the right type of rental and they don't want a big rental. They just want a smaller rental, but they like to be a part of this community. Uh, so I think that there is an opportunity for that. And, yeah, and also I am definitely in favor of the mixed use zoning. Um, I used to live above a shop downtown grade even for years and years and it was a great, you know, it was a great thing. And I know we don't have a lot of shops or downtown. But as far as the future goes, that maybe would be something appropriate.
Remember living above a grocery store when I was three.
Do you have that at home? Have any mixed use residential?
Just the one Dave mentioned.
What, what was that one?
It's the, it's only right behind Pine Street, on the west side of Pine Street. There's an office in it and.
Back into, uh, they, uh, Pine Street Cafe parking lot. I, who, I don't live there, so I don't.
Wasn't sure at Keenan, like their boat storage.
That was both condominiums. I had a conversation last night with somebody who's renting one of the storied units on Verplank Drive, the new ones there. And he just loves it. And I, I was telling him about the, the accommodation we're making for special, special use for certain areas where you could live, have a place that you could stay above there. He thought that was the greatest idea. And he said, a lot of people, if they knew about it, would might go for it. That he uses it to live in Grand Rapids and stay overnight. So, I think, I think there's, there's a niche for that kind of a, that kind of a thing. But it plays into broadening our thinking and the whole bunch of other stuff.
And again, we have to find the land to be able to do.
Yeah, and some, some will involve redevelopment. So I think a- as buildings begin to age, um, that, that's certainly an opportunity for, for redevelopment. When it becomes, uh, more cost efficient just to build something new than to continue improving building. Um, I think there are definitely some underutilized properties, core area of the city.
It's, um, that's why, that's why I love this city. You drive around and there's variety. And it's, it's, if you take, you look at it from a different eye and say, I can, I can envision something big there besides what's there now. And it all takes time because I don't own the property, therefore it's not for me to say, but you can see all kinds of possibilities. I would agree across the street here. Um, that layout, they would, they're allowed another four units in there, that piece of property. And they ran out of money when they built those and therefore all that land behind there, open space, that, that was intended to be four more units and, um, would have been high, a little higher density. But look where it is. Well, you don't mention higher density on, on a lot like that. It's on the intersection of a couple of streets. So that's the kind of thing that, and they're attached, by the way, too. Now detached, and we thought that was a great use of that property. So there was, take a chunk and look at it. Somebody comes in with an idea, it's true, makes sense. Okay, since there's a law, I'm going to go through, I, I issued, I issued a homework assignment last week, the last two weeks when you, when you were here. And so therefore, I'm going to ask everybody for their homework results. Okay, we're gonna start. Heather gave me hers early, so she gets extra credit. Okay? So I'm gonna have you share with us what you came up with. Hey, Heather?
Ferrisburg where parks prevail.
Andy?
I, I'm a dud on my homework. I have not come up with a good one.
That's, that's the slogan right there. Not a good one. Okay, you get incomplete.
I like Heather's.
And then yours?
Yeah, yes, I. I, I would definitely incorporate recreation and the parks.
Mr. Mayor? I don't have any slogan. I, I always thought it should include something with parks or recreation. And include a hashtag.
Heather?
Asked my kids about it. Give me body parts. Didn't follow up on it.
Blame your kids.
I'm blaming my three, my three boys. They're not here. They're not gonna be here.
Oh, my daughters are all grown up. I can't use that for an excuse, but, okay.
Roger, so what do you have?
There we go.
Oh, he's, here he's got his notes out.
Come to the audience.
I have a couple. Small is beautiful. Every cloud has a silver lining. That's what she said. Size doesn't matter. Don't judge a book by its cover. The fun begins in Ferrisburg. Don't blink or you'll miss us. Lots of parks, lots of parks and water, water parks and you, beaches, parks and Verplanks. If I'm not back in thirty minutes, it means the bridge went up. Uh, lots of parks per person. Absence makes the heart grow fonder and, uh, the pinks, Verplanks and North Beach Park. So.
Can you repeat your first one again?
Small is beautiful. So tying in with our small community. But, uh, Roger, I, I, I applaud you for bringing this up, but I, I, I certainly think you should open this uh, brainstorming up to the whole community.
We, we can do that unless we really come up with a good one. No, I have to tell you mine. Ferrisburg, X two X's. Uh, Ferrisburg, we have a split personality. Byway runs right down through the middle. Ferrisburg, where nature smiles and our sand dune, sand comes in piles. Take off on. Nature smiles for seven miles. The, the lake is seven miles long. It, it goes through the township. It goes to Fruitport. Okay, um, then I have another one. Ferrisburg. Live, work and play. So, I, I agree, we should keep this open because we're looking for, and I mentioned two parks. I think somebody should include, and I was trying to think of some, uh, uh, another word for parks. Creation outside, but we talked about that parkland and what that represents is what, for the city and parks. That's a good chunk. And, um, I think we'd be proud of it. So we'll keep it going since we have a lot of incompletes. I don't know better than to assign too much work, too much homework.
And to those who failed the home assignment, uh, use ChatGPT.
There you go. Anyway, um, onward, uh, David, where do we stand right now?
Well, I was thinking, maybe it'd be a, a good idea to walk through the chart and give us some, some things to think about and, um, my suggestion would be to at least, if we could walk through the, the, the districts and the future land use categories and, and the housing types. And then based on, on our, our thoughts tonight, I could come back at the next meeting and maybe make some more, um, recommendations, uh, more specific recommendations, uh, uh, on each one of these tools and topics. Um, make recommendations on where we might want to consider things like ADUs or, or mixed use and, and how we might uh, change the master plan to incorporate some of these initial ideas. So, um, I think tonight is more of a brainstorming. Just want to hear what's on your mind. Explain a little bit, especially for, for the newer members, uh, who haven't been through this process, uh, the relationship between the future land use categories and our zoning districts. Um, and then next time, you know, this is kind of a, just a good, get the juices flowing. And then next time I could, I could have some more specific recommendations to see if, if you are for or against those. And, and then I think that would be, uh, probably the extent of our, our housing conversation until later in the process where, where I have, uh, the, the, the language in the initial draft for you. Uh, or we can continue the conversation as, as much as you, you like, but, um, I think we're, in order to keep on track, we'll, we'll probably do two meetings on housing. Uh, then, uh, we'll have two other meetings in, in, um, late October and in early November on, on, on other topics before we, uh, prepare the, the draft. So, uh, Roger, would, would you like to, to walk through this then and then just?
If you would, please.
Okay, so I know you didn't have much time at all to, to review this, but, um, I wanted, this is a probably a good tool for you to, to assess over the next two weeks before our, um, our October meeting. Um, so this table is, um, a comparison, as I mentioned, between, uh, the zoning districts, which, uh, that's the, the, the second row where you, you see RD, RG one, RG two, RG three. And so those are all of our, our, our zoning districts, um, on the zoning map. And then for the RG one, I also included the, uh, ILO, which is the inland lake overlay district. So, um, if you, if you see our, our, our zoning map, certain properties, um, a, a Long Spring Lake and the Bayou are, are outlined in blue. Uh, that's the inland lake overlay district. Um, but that is, that's all, uh, RG one a- as the, as the, the base zoning district. Um, so I, I, I just, I, I kind of combine those in, in one category here. So, uh, just to start off, uh, the, the first zoning district i- is, um, is RD, which is a low-density Dune residential. And that corresponds to Dune Residential on the, the future land use map. And in the, uh, kind of the pinkish colored row beneath that is, is the future land use description. So the idea wi- with, um, planning as it relates to zoning is that uh, each future land use category should have a corresponding zoning district. Um, so that our future land use map influences how our zoning map looks over the long term. Um, so as you, as you notice now, they're, they're not the same, but over years and years and years of rezoning and, um, they're eventually going to look more, more alike because ultimately the future land use map is, is what guides the zoning map designations. So they're not intended to be the same map during the planning process. Uh, there, it, it's intended, you know, so, some designations may say the same, but there, there's some areas where, where we want to see change or where, um, the, the zoning, uh, i- it happens slower, more incrementally than us designating a, a, a large swath of land on the future land use map. So, um, I think, Mr. Carson, you had mentioned before that, you know, we, we can, yes, go out and rezone property if, the city has the, the, uh, the authority to do that, uh, with public notice, but, uh, so there might be cases where we say this block needs to be rezoned. There, there might be other cases where we say this whole area is planned for this zoning district, but we're going to wait until individual rezoning applications are received and then we'll rezone them one by one. So you can go either way. But the, the, the main point is that each future land use category is implemented by a zoning district. Now, we may find that, um, we create a new future land use category, um, on this map. And, um, so let's just say this, um, this area, which is mixed residential, we say, you know what? There's two different areas that, you know, north and south. One needs to be a little bit different than the other. We could, we could split this and then have, have an extra future land use category. So we may find that we don't have a zoning district then to implement one or more future land use categories. And, and that's okay. The, the fu- the, the master plan w- will identify that we need a, a, a new zoning district for that. So i- in the zoning plan, which is i- in the master plan, uh, it will say that there is not a corresponding zoning district. And so that, that would then require us to create a zoning district to implement the plan. So every, every district will have a correspond, or every category will have a corresponding zoning district unless we don't. And then if we don't, we have to make one someday. Um, so with that, the, 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 the pink cow, the pink row here, under RD, the, which is Dune, uh, Dune Residential in our future land use map, uh, it plans for single-family residential. So that's single-family detached houses, uh, three to four per acre. So that, that's going to be any, you, ten thousand to twelve thousand square foot lots, whi- which is essentially in line with, with the cell below it, which has permitted twelve thousand square foot lots. The RG one zoning district then, uh, corresponds to low-density residential and lakefront settlement on, on the future land use map. And that allows single-family up to three per acre. And then when you're in that overlay district, as I mentioned before, uh, it, it says up to eight units per acre in the overlay district. Now, that, that's really recognizing that that's a, uh, an established area, the, the lakefront lots and the overlay. There are some small lots. I, I'm not sure if it gets up to eight units per acre, but, um, that's a pretty high density. And, and we're, I don't think we're, based on that future land use category, we're really going to be upping the density in that waterfront area. And in, in that RG one and the ILO, we, we only allow for single-family detached dwellings. Um, RG two i- is, corresponds to traditional neighborhood on the future land use map. And so that allows up to, residential up to six per acre. And RG two is where we start going. And R G two is where we start going up in, in, in scale and intensity and housing density. So six units per acre and that's, then you see the corresponding zoning requirement. Allow, this allows lots down to seven thousand square feet, which equates to about six units per acre. But then in that district, we also allow for two family dwellings. But with that though, the, the minimum area basically doubles. So if you have, if you want two units, it has to be fourteen thousand square feet rather than, than seven thousand. Then we move up.
Excuse me, David, at six units per acre, that's theoretical. That's using every, every bit of it for just a lot of housing with those, with those sidewalks, those streets. Because it's only forty two thousand square feet an acre. So six times seven is forty two. That doesn't sound right.
Yes, it's, it's. I think in the master planning effort, I mean, we, we're looking at overall densities. And then when we look at zoning, we're getting more specific in terms of the minimum lot size. And those minimum lot sizes should generally correspond to the guidance in the master plan. And so, so, so yes, so where it's not a perfect equation here, seven thousand times six. Is, is forty two thousand or. Forty two thousand square feet, so it's not going to be a perfect match between the recommendation, the plan and the zoning district. Square footage and, but you're right though. You could not, you could not maximize six units per acre. You could not get up to that if you have seven thousand square foot lots and if you also have to put in a street in stormwater and things like that, so. That's something, there's a little bit of a disconnect. I don't think that's a major discrepancy, but there is a little bit of a disconnect because you probably are never going to be able to get to six per acre. With seven thousand square foot lots, even though it's forty two thousand square feet.
Unless you want six stories high.
Yep, so to, to get six units per acre, you might. Actually have to do smaller lots to account for road, street right away and stormwater and infrastructure, so. I think that's a good, good observation though, when we're comparing future land use to zoning. So, so R G two, traditional neighborhood allows two family dwellings. And single family, then we move up to, to R G three, which is our mixed residential in, in the. Future land use map. And that really is our, our mixed residential is our highest density residential zoning district. So we, we allow really everything across the board, single family, two family, three family, four family, and multifamily, which is anything beyond. Four, four units. But again, this is, one of the things our ordinance that I think we need to look at is that we require. The same minimum square footage for each unit. So, so you have seven thousand for one unit, fourteen thousand for two units, twenty one thousand for three units, twenty eight thousand for four units. So when you're looking at like an infill type development. It's really, doesn't meet the character of the area. If you wanted to put in a four unit townhouse building in the central residential area of the city. And you want it to match the, what existing character of the areas, it's never going to match because you, it has to have twenty eight thousand square feet of land. So that's, you know, over a half acre. That you're going to have one four unit building with a massive lawn area around it. And then you're, when you're going to have individual some, six, seven thousand square foot lots around it. So it's a complete, it's, it's really out of context in a way. And so if we want to allow for townhouses, infill type townhouses. It's important that they be at the same scale. So it's not just a, in my opinion, we don't have just a, a minimum square footage. Per unit, I think we need to look at that a little bit differently. I mean, I think the lots need to be bigger, but not just adding seven thousand per unit. I think that's something where all of a sudden you take up a lot of land, it's very inefficient and it does not lend itself toward increasing the housing supply or affordability.
Give me, give me the example is the Gables. And there is, I think fifty three units in there as I recall. But attached, attached housing is fifteen acres. So it's barely above three per acre, even with attached. Because I've got streets, I've got parking. You know, it's, it's, so theoretical value doesn't, really doesn't mean anything. I think it's kind of misleading to even put it that high. When it doesn't translate, I think that we should change that unless we want to go higher. It's another possibility in certain parcels.
And then beyond that, the. Commercial and industrial zoning districts and categories are next. And you see there's a couple options for upper floor residential accessory dwelling units. And then in our L I three zoning district, we actually allow for residential condos, which there's not really any. It just, I'm surprised, it's condo is just a form of ownership and I think as you all know, there's a lot of. Misunderstanding what condo means. And I think having the word or the phrase residential condos as a allowable land use is not an appropriate. Land use category, we should say what we mean. So residential condos, do we mean attached residential housing? Do we mean mixed use attached housing above, above industrial buildings? Or do we just mean multifamily in this L I three zoning district? So I'm not quite sure what the intent. Of that special land use residential condos there because you know, a residential condo can be single family detached cottage shores type development. So is that what we want in, in L I three? So it's something I think we can clean up in zoning as a implement, after we implement a, as part of the implementation of the future land use plan.
Back when that was written though, it probably was multi-unit condos and like what we did at Channelside.
It was, that was probably, it's some sort of attached product, either. Patch two, commercial or on its own. But a lot of, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, I think that's what the understanding was even from the zoning perspective. Condo just means attached, but we know now that it's not how we use the term anymore.
Because what would you call Channelside now?
The, the Channelside with the, the storage units with the, the residential. I mean, I think it's sort of, it's kind of a mixed use. We call it accessory dwellings as, as part of the storage. But I mean, I think it's, it's really kind of a generally a mixed use type of development. So, so those are all of our categories, I think before the next meeting, maybe just. Study the zoning district intent statements and the future land use categories and then. Then we go down the side here on the left column, we have our single family dwellings. And I think we really need to look at, at the square footages. So I think twelve thousand, ten thousand, and seven thousand are going to be perfectly appropriate for probably the majority of the city. Again, I want to look at that a little bit closer, but I think there's really, there's areas on the future land use map in the central area, which we. Designated as mixed residential. And then more in the downtown area, we have our traditional neighborhood residential. I think those are areas where we may, might want to look at potentially smaller lots. Or not have the, you know, additional seven thousand per, per unit. If we want duplexes or triplexes or townhouses side by side to fit in a community. They should be on a similar scale, similar setbacks. And the lot size in a way is going to dictate how much you can fit on it when you meet your setbacks. So I think there's, there's, we should look at our core area of the city a little bit differently than the rest of the area. So I, it's kind of an urban type of traditional development versus the rest of the, maybe seventy percent of the city is going to be more suburban in nature. So our code is really more of a suburban code. And we're looking to increase housing, drop lot sizes. It's going to be more of an urban type of code for a select number of areas. And I think what I like to do is make some recommendations on how we can do that at the next meeting. Maybe circle some areas on the future land use map and say, here's where we could see some infill. Two family, three family townhouses that, that fit in in the single family neighborhood. In my neighborhood, in East Town, Grand Rapids, there, in my neighborhood, there's a. Single family, two family, and sometimes even rows of townhouses that are all kind of fit seamlessly in a. You know, historically platted neighborhood. And, and a lot of cities now are allowing that by right. One, two, three, four, five units all in what were traditionally single family residential zoning districts. So again, I, I'm, I'm not, my intent is not to push you in any direction, but just to give you some ideas on how you could. Increase housing supply and affordability. You may say this is not right in this area, or maybe it is right in this area. So I'll, I'll give you some ideas, I'm not going to push you any certain direction, but I'll give some ideas for next time.
I'm confused on mixed residential. It says all housing types.
Yes, so.
Six per acre, and then if you got Vice Landing is mixed residential, Gables is mixed residential. Right behind us here on Roosevelt, mixed residential. And then that whole area. Behind Verplanks. Yeah, I'm not sure. Can't remember how we got there. Before.
I think mixed residential, we were identifying the areas mainly that had attached housing. Or that could be appropriate for attached housing.
This is all housing types. I think that should be clarified, probably, it probably is in the, in the language someplace, but.
Yes, in mixed residential, in the master plan, it basically says the full spectrum of housing. Would be allowable in this, in that category. So single family, two family, attached, even multifamily.
I've got it right. Variety of single family detached, attached, and multifamily housing types.
Yes, exactly what you read, that, that's exercise I went through, I, I read the, the intent statement in the, in the master plan, future land use categories. And I basically just summarized them in three words in this pink row here. So it's, it's a little abbreviated, but, but that, it's representing exactly what you read there. For, for each one of the categories. So again, so we have our, our single family, two family, four family, multifamily. This R G three slash mixed residential accommodates all, all full spectrum of, of housing. But again, though, I think we, we need to look at more attached type housing as in more townhouses, things like that, that could be allowable. In, in, for infill or redevelopment. In, in kind of the central area of the city, whereas outside is going to be more suburban in nature, single family detached. Possibly with accessory dwelling units, attached or detached, but we can certainly look into that. Multifamily, multiple family dwellings, as mentioned before, we could also include those. Right now you see multifamily only permitted in R G three, which corresponds to mixed residential. So that's the only place in the city where we allow for multifamily. We, it may be a good idea to, to look at service, core commercial and general commercial as other places where we could do apartments. Because as I mentioned before, those are, those are easy ways to get in higher densities, you know, those, those will be rentals. But they'll be in places where. They'll, they'll be less pushed back. They'll be closer to, you know, they'll be walkable to the central downtown area. With our goals of having more vibrant downtown, it's not a bad idea to try to increase our, our density. Closer to the central portion. So usually when we look at multifamily or rentals, we, we want them in an area that is more walkable and closer to good, you know. Restaurants and places to shop and that's really the intent because with multifamily, you're going to have. Potential for, for more traffic, more cars, so we want to try to reduce the amount of trips. I mean, if, if this is placed in a walkable area, it really mitigates that impact of, of the density and, and increase the population in that core area. So there's less need for a car, there's, there may be. Fewer car households, so. And then we look at upper floor residential, nursing homes, senior housing, accessory dwelling units, these are all things I think we need to continue to look at. In, in, you know, where they might be appropriate, so. So I would suggest before the next meeting, really think about all of these types of, of housing products down the left column. And think about where they would be appropriate on the future land use map and then. As it corresponds then to the zoning map. We may. I think. Between this, these two areas in the, in the city. Now the traditional area in the mixed residential, I think that's where we're going to probably have the most change in most, the more. Probably the most recommendations as it relates to, to increased housing density. So I think those are the areas that we really should take a look at.
Can I ask a quick? I don't have the survey in front of me, but I'm reading the survey from. The last redo of the master plan and it said, although there was some interest. Have we had any? A new survey. I was thinking that and then that there was that online survey too.
It's one of those questions that if, if you ask me if I want it next, next to me, I say no. Without putting in context, some places in the city that something like that might fit. So I'm, I'm, I'm against it until I know where, where to go.
Right.
So I, I think that those kind of responses. That's where I've talked before about being flexible. And people don't understand that. We, where we have a certain amount of flexibility and we're constrained by. You know, what our master plan says and what does, especially what zoning is. I still, I still think we, we, we should have the ability to be nimble. You know, when something comes up, like, like Brockmire, for example, that we can do more. To act on that to move the process. And, and if it doesn't fit, then we should say so. Right off the bat. But I, I still think that you can be creative. And still maintain the character of the city without going overboard, not a hand. But the city's gradually changing anyway. You know, number one, we're getting older and so some of us spend part of our time here. And a lot of people spend part of their time here and part of their time someplace else, but it's going to happen. In the winter time, come here in the summertime or grace first of south. But anyway, they have a lot of that, so that creates a lot of vacant property of just sitting idle around. And does that represent an opportunity for somebody to do something else with it? I don't know. It also means that the nature of your population. Excuse me. We're part of a larger area and a larger area is a need for housing for the working people. That need, that could use it. We're close to all major highways, so therefore we're kind of ideal. Now, there's, there's a bridge in between, but big deal. That's just a bridge. But anyway, I think a lot of people would like to live. Because of our parks, because of our beaches.
Public transportation.
Is, is, is a problem. But you have our arbitransal, but yeah, it's, it's on demand. But anyway. I, I don't know how you build nimbleness into your, your jargon, your system, but.
I feel like it's so important to keep pulse on our neighboring communities. Because Ferriesburg is unique and it does have an older population, but. The needs in Grand Haven are, there's people that need that here too, so.
I know it was getting younger, by the way, people like Connor moving in with kids. It's a lot, a lot of kids.
My neighborhood hasn't changed yet, but.
Love it, yep.
They say all the time in our neighborhood, they say, man, it turned over quick.
It did. It did.
I still, I don't know what turned over. I don't know exactly what turned over.
We've got more dogs than I remember.
Walk by your house about three times a day. I hear you on the change. We've, we've heard that quite a bit, just to echo what you said, is since moving here four years ago, so many people have said, holy Cow Lake, our neighborhood or this area has so many younger people, there are so many kids. So, nothing.
Love it, love it.
I appreciate you saying about being nimble during it. Like last week, Jordan did that, and also like just recognizing what the developers said, and then right after that, you talked about the appearance of it, when they were talking about the 25%. So just to highlight that, except it's been exactly what you said, and that's kind of exactly what happened last week, or last meeting.
You want to say something?
Oh, no, I'm taking it all in. I'll lean back.
I've said, my voice is gone. Somebody else has to take over, go ahead. And you've got a whole, you've got a whole scrolling through your table.
Yeah, so I brought this up last time, but David wasn't here. Um, and I, a sep- separate from the master plan, I know it was kind of uncovered during the Brockmire, um, development, that the zoning ordinance doesn't really match up with the future land use. And I know that it, to me, it seems like the, the master plan, future land use is probably accurate. Do you think there's any chance that this is typo in the PUD section of the designation of those? It says low-density res- uh, residential, you know, six units per acre, and then medium density in, um, RG2 and RG3, say six and eight. So RG1 and RG2 both say six. I know that we can't have really necessarily control over that, but it doesn't seem like the same.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, we, we definitely need to address the discrepancy and determine, you know, what is the appropriate density and ensure that our zoning ordinance is not allowing for something that we have, we're not planning for, so.
Right.
Here, well, we could be doing up to six based on PUD provision and, and, well, the master plan doesn't say that.
Just seems like it's opening the door for more people.
Well, and one thing too, uh, as part of this, we discussed this maybe two, three months ago, uh, our, our PUD process itself is going to be completely revamped, um, a, a, as part of this entire project, to implement the, um, master plan and to be consistent with the, uh, the housing grant. So our PUD process is one of the tools that we can use for housing development projects that are innovative and that might not fit completely with a zoning district, or that, you know, we see as a, a way to, to earn greater density through a quality development. So it's a good zoning tool to have, but ours is, ours needs to be improved, so.
Other communities use the designation PD, plan development. Maybe if we're going to change our definition, be a good time to be closer to what they use. You have any preference?
They're, they're, I think it's, it's the same concept. So it's a, you know, plan development versus planned unit development. I, I think it's, it really is, is just how you define them and how you use them locally. But I think that it's the same concept of, of providing flexibility with zoning through either, um, you know, rezoning to, to PUD, or through special land use, which is what we do now.
You don't have any preference for PD or PUD?
Um, well, I, not really. I've heard some people really not like the, uh, the PUD abbreviation, but, uh, other than that, it's, 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 it's really the, the same tool. Just, but they can all be, just how you, uh, how you, uh, draft the process and, and the provisions, qualification, standards, and what you can, you waiver vary is, is all can be adjusted locally.
I think you don't, uh, look, uh, municipalities can follow what the county designations are. Isn't there kind of a standardized way of looking at it? So it's trying to get everybody to the same page in the county.
Um, I, I mean, I, I think, but in, I think most, I know, it is, I think most townships are going to be zoned and not under a county zoning here. I, do you know of any areas in the county that are, I think all jurisdictions in, in the county are going to be zoned through cities or, or townships?
They, they will be, but that, but they have their, they have a way of, it's a suggested set, I have to look it up and see, but, uh, I just remember hearing that, so.
Yeah, years, a couple of years back, they tried to get all the municipalities and townships to use the same kind of colors and definitions for single-family or two-plex or three-plex. So all the colors, colors were standardized.
Did that kind of work out like going to the metric, metric system?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got done and got put on the shelf.
Like their own colors.
I mean, there, there's some value to being consistent with, with the Jason jurisdictions, but I, I don't think we, I don't, I don't think it needs to be a priority in our case.
Number one, if you look at some of our, uh, designations for, uh, for zoning, other places, they don't have anything like that variety we've got. Waterfront? You border three different bodies of water. I tried to get that in my slogan. Wait, years ago, I was chairman of the Ferrisburg Image Committee. And that was back when Leon still was mayor. And that was a long time ago, early eighties. And I look, I keep looking for my file at home, I can't find it. Um, but we were looking for different ways of, Ferrisburg is, it's in, in some cases not seen in the best light for different reasons. One, our name is unique compared to others, and others is, uh, headlines that we grab once in a while. But anyway, if, if you look at the image, and one thing we try, we, we came up with is changing our logo, making it more colorful, using different colors, red and blue and green. And the other thing was changing the name, Ferrisburg. We came up with all kinds of ideas, and, and one of the ideas was Ottawa Peninsula. But we're not exactly a peninsula, but you have three bodies of water that, that, that were born, that were bordered by. And, um, but you just throw those things out, and you look and see how unique our little burg is. Keep saying Tri-Cities is not cities, it's a city, a village, and a burg. Or the burgers. So, but anyway, I just throw that out there, that I don't, it's not necessary to be aligned with everybody else. You can, the world. Anyway, the image committee went nowhere, obviously. Our name stayed the same, the logo stayed the same. The same logo I used on our, uh, float that I built for the Coast Guard Festival. They still use it.
How long did we have?
It's, uh, the day they're incorporated, 1963. I think it goes back that long. And, and the difficulty with that, trying to, you're trying to put that on the, on the trailer, right, the hall behind a car, is to get that thing to stand up, and then you, you bake one of those, it's eight feet tall, it's not perfectly round, it's got the sails sticking out. So that's an appendage on there that makes it a little more unique, a little different than just your round. But it's, uh, when you put that on a float, it's one more thing that just, up. So that'd be a little challenging too. Anyway, still use that same float, didn't need to change. It works. Anyway, I died, I identified the best, I verge here. Too much? Any other things we would, just talk about, but we have assignment now for next meeting? And, uh, talk to your kids and come up with some ideas. It's all good. And, um, but, okay. Well, we'll go, let's go down the agenda first. Let me start off, see where we are. Okay. So, public comment, anymore, anything else, Barry? Can you come up with some more ideas while you're sitting there?
I, I, I had one question, I guess, um, the, uh, our advisor has given us some suggestions on where to look. I, I wonder if there's anything that is in the toolkit that, uh, is being ruled out as maybe not, uh, not a good place to look for us as we try to look at more, um, ways to reform, uh, housing and zoning in Ferrisburg to be more supportive, uh, of, um, the kind of growth we would like to see consistent with our goals.
Maybe instead of ruling things out is what we'd like to see in it. Picking your favorite things. And the right, because there's going to be a lot in there. You don't want to make a two lists, this stays in, that stays out. Pick the things you think ought to be there. They're important, about that? Okay? You know, I have not accessed that document yet. You guys link on one of the things that you sent, I'll go back over and I'll find. Thank you.
On that, I, I requested to get a, a Ferrisburg email, and it was sent to that, so that's why for the last meeting, I also did not access it, because I hadn't accessed that email, but now that I have, that's where it was. So I don't know if you requested to get one of those, but anybody that did, it may have been there.
It is for that exact same rea- that very, that very reason, because at my age, two emails would be too confusing. And I would forget. Mr. Mayor? Connor?
Our boy.
Will you pour on your dog? Oh, that's okay. Oh, I had a couple of things. Remember when I, I, when I went to the Chamber of Public Policy meeting this morning, I talked about adding Housing Next and being affiliated with Lake Shore Advantage. Excuse me, as part of the economic development. So I asked the question, are they, have they found anybody to replace Elizabeth Butler, who was working with our economic development brownfield? And, uh, she might have been at one of our meetings here too. And they, they're interviewing people now, so they should come up with somebody that, and that hopefully can step into that role, but they need to see the importance. Uh, the Ottawa Sand, I did Ottawa Sands documentary here a week ago. They filmed out there and they asked me to, based upon my vast knowledge of things that do, in the past, history, I was able to go over a bunch of stuff. And out of that, I probably gave them 20 minutes, and they'll, and they'll make, maybe get, give you one minute in the documentary.
Where is this documentary? Bring, or?
It'll probably be shown at the grand opening, hopefully by then, uh, based on the different groups. And, um, it's, I'm eager to see it myself, because it's a park bench duty. It was very interesting, nice young man that did it.
Like the Parks Department was doing the documentary?
Yes. Yes, Ottawa County. Yep, where it came from. And, and for those of you who don't know, I was on the Ottawa County Park Commission for 13 years, and I was on the commission and chairman of this body when that purchase took place, Ottawa Sands. So I, a lot of history going back and forth to when that was, you said, mine. I get to ride in the truck around the place, check it out. The grand opening, October 17th, or the 6:30, 6:30, and the mayor's going to say a few words. And, and then as part of the whole program, I had intended to be there, but, um, we're supposed to drive to Philadelphia that day and see my grandkids. And my wife doesn't know this, but, uh, I might ask her if we can, after the remarks were made there, if we can leave for Philadelphia, get as far as Pittsburgh, and then get the rest away Friday morning. I'll see how that's going to go over. By then I'd be forced.
Give it to 20 of that?
Yep. Yep. So anyway, if you don't see me next meeting, you know what? I want to mention those things, sure. I mentioned part of B parting, part of Housing Next, they're incorporating with the chamber, and, uh, that all, that, that program. As we all know, there's a big push on housing in this area, and there is a lot of barriers too. Uh, so we want to be right there as leaders of the pack. So, next pla- next meeting is the, what's the first Thursday in October? October 3rd, right, Craig? And we've all got a little homework to do between now and then, and think about this, because, um, we're getting down to time crunch now, and there's lots to be done between now and December. So pressures on Mr. Trusick? Is your wife in the same business? Is your wife in the same business?
What, I'm someone's business?
Oh, she's an ER nurse. She's an ER nurse now, but at one point in her life, she was planning, community planning field.
Okay, can she help you out on this for two weeks?
She's smart on me, so I should ask for help.
Just checking. That would hurt to ask, okay. Over that, I have nothing else, we're done.